Okay. Did you hear first? Yes. Got it. So it's taken first, it's another. Got it.
It is now. Okay. Welcome to the Dana Point City Council Meeting of February 5th, 2019. We will now reconvene our meeting. Uh, we're gonna start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Mayor Pro Tim Wyatt, could you lead us?
Please face the flag and repeat after me. Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which expands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you please remain standing for the invocation. Uh, this evening it will be provided by Rabbi Eli Gorovich from Shabbat of Dana Point.
Almighty God, we stand before you in prayer. Look favorably upon the mayor and city council members of our great city of Dana Point. Bless his extraordinary individuals elected by the people who have placed their faith and confidence in them to lead our wonderful city. For their blessed his distinguished leaders so they may recognize that theirs is a God-given position, acknowledging you, God, as a sovereign ruler of all men and all nations. In the performance of their duty as our elected officials, they are accomplishing one of the biblical seven universal laws, ensuring a peaceful and moral society. Grant these leaders, Almighty God, the awareness of your presence and the realization that by laboring for the betterment of our city, they are doing your will. May each of them be endowed with divine inspiration to lead with a spirit of wisdom, a spirit of understanding, and a spirit of counsel. Bless them with good help, compassion, and good fellowship. And may we finally merit to see the fulfillment of the biblical prophecy of the era of the redemption, of world peace, when all nations will live together in harmony and mutual respect, under the banner of the great Creator. Now let us say amen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Maybe seated. Uh, Mr. City Attorney, do we have a closed session announcement?
Uh, we have no reportable items from closed session this evening.
Thank you very much. We have a couple of presentations tonight, however, our first presenter is not here, so we're gonna switch this up a little bit. Uh, we have a presentation from Lieutenant Colonel Rusty Tooten, United States Marine Corps Commander, Task Force Lion. Uh, Lieutenant Colonel, could you please come up?
First of all, Mr. Mayor, uh, Ms. Mayor, thank you for having me today. Thank you for, uh, having me at your council meeting, my wife Alondo over here. Uh, she ended up moved to Dana Point in the summer of 2017. In my nineteen-year career in the Marine Corps, that was probably move number eight or nine. I've lived a lot of places, three places in California, Hawaii twice, um, East Coast several times. It was evident to us early on that this was a special place, somewhere very welcoming, very friendly, very patriotic and supportive of your Marines and your service members. As you said recently, I was a commander of Task Force Lion. The Coalition Task Force in Iraq of US Marines, US soldiers, and soldiers from the countries of Denmark, um, France, and Norway. And our task was to assist Iraqi security forces in the fight against ISIS. So while I was over there, I just got back in December, I flew this flag over my base uh, in honor of the, of the city of Dana Point, in appreciation for you and, uh, the great town you run, and the citizens of your, of your city here. It's a very special place, and I appreciate the opportunity tonight to present this to you, Mr. Mayor, on behalf of myself, to the citizen of Dana Point. Thank you.
Well, Colonel, I really appreciate this. I'm very honored to, to accept this on behalf of, uh, the city of Dana Point. However, like I mentioned, we have a couple veterans sitting up here from the Marine Corps, and this is for the entire city, not, not just for me. So I'd like the council to come on down and, and accept this with me. Like I said, I'm, I'm very honored and privileged to accept this. Um, Dana Point has a long history of supporting our armed forces, especially our Marines. Um, you know, it's something I never thought I'd have a chance to do. I, I've had family that served over in Iraq as well. Uh, so this is really something very special to me, and I wanna thank you so much for thanking of your adopted city and hopefully your final, your final place. So, welcome, thank you very much for coming, and thank you for this.
Mr. Mayor, more thirty-year pins are on order. Okay. So I still don't see our other presenter. So we'll move on, and we'll, we'll take a break when, when Supervisor Bartlett shows up and do that presentation. Uh, so that brings us to the reading of ordinance titles. Madam Clerk, are there any ordinances to read?
Mr. Mayor, I do not have any ordinance titles to read this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. That takes us to the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the city council, the public, or staff request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for, excuse me, separate action. Madam Clerk, are there any items to be removed by the public?
Item number eleven, please.
Item eleven? By staff?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, we were planning on removing item eleven from tonight's calendar and pushing it to the next meeting on February nineteenth. We've got a little work, uh, yet to do on the resolution itself.
Okay. So as we're removing that, how does that handle public comment on it? So we won't have any? I don't, I don't know, since we had a member of the public wanting to remove it as well?
Well, you have a couple of choices. You can go ahead and just have public comment on the item, uh, and then remove it. You can have the public commenter comment during the regular public comment section instead of on an agenda item, um, or you could just withhold, uh, or ask the person rather to hold their comment until it's on the agenda.
Uh, thank you. I think I'm gonna ask for the second, since this item is going to be, it's not really ready for discussion at this point. Um, if you would like to discuss it in open public comments, by all means, please do that. However, I think we're gonna hold public comment on it till we, we bring it back on February nineteenth.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Could I just ask for clarification? So is the speaker who came getting a chance to speak under public comments versus an agenda item?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Right. Okay, anything to be pulled by council? No? Okay. So... That complete, can I get a motion on the consent calendar?
I will move we approve the consent calendar, uh, after having removed item eleven from the calendar.
I will second that motion.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes unanimously. That'll bring us to the public comments section. Uh, there will be a three-minute time limit per person and an overall time limit of thirty minutes for this public comments portion of the agenda. At the mayor's discretion, the balance of public comments will be heard after the new business portion of the agenda. All comments are to be directed to the city council and should not consist of any personal attacks. Members of the public are expected to maintain a professional courteous decorum during their comments. State law prohibits the city council from taking action on a specific item unless it appears on the posted agenda. City clerk will distribute any handouts you may have. Please state your name and city of residence for the record. Looks like we have two public speakers tonight. Uh, the first is Wayne Yost, and the second will be Juan Gonzalez.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council staff, members of our community. My name is Wayne Yost, thirty-six-year resident of Dana Point. About one year ago, I came before the city council in general comments and made a suggestion that you limit the duration of your closed session prior to the city council meetings to the allotted one-hour time and promptly start the city council meeting at six o'clock. Prior to that, many times, uh, the members of the public that were in attendance were waiting half hour, forty-five minutes, sometimes an hour before the public council meeting convened. And I want to applaud you for pretty much adhering to that promptly starting at six PM. Thank you for that. I want to bring us to our last city council meeting, which lasted until about one forty-eight, or, excuse me, twelve forty-eight AM. Uh, it was a long six-and-three-quarter hours meeting. Approximately one-third of it, over two hours, was devoted to trying to establish who had the, uh, right to establish the agenda. And I realize that this is an important topic. However, there's a lot of city business that needs to be attended to, and I think items such as occurred the last time could be done amongst you without having it being done in front of the public. And, uh, that cup of coffee just wasn't doing the trick right around eleven-thirty, twelve o'clock, so I would just request items such as this, perhaps you could settle amongst yourselves instead of bringing it up before the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yost. Uh, Juan Gonzalez.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Juan Gonzalez, SoCal Gas Public Affairs. Thank you so much for the opportunity before you today. Number one, I'd like to start off, uh, by giving kudos to your staff. Uh, SoCal Gas has some projects here in the city of Dana Point, and we immediately reached out to Public Works Department, uh, Mr. Brady, Mr. Abrejano, Mr. Ca- uh, Ca- and, uh, oh my gosh, I'm forgetting somebody else. But Grant, y'all, your staff in the Public Works Department has been amazing, so thank you so very much, Mr. Nacore. So again, just wanna be before you and just thank you guys for, for the wonderful staff you, you have and be willing to work with SoCal Gas on some of the projects here in the city of Dana Point. Secondly, I wanted to reach out to you primarily for informational purposes. Um, I wanted to make, uh, the city aware of some legislative matters taking place in the state that can impact all of you and all of your residents. Last year's legislative session had particular items regarding to the state becoming all electric, uh, moving the notion of people having the option of using either gas or natural, uh, natural gas and/or electricity. Uh, two pieces of legislation that came forward would have required that by twenty-twenty-two, any new buildings in the state of California would be all electric. And the other one would have required that by twenty-thirty, all, um, current natural gas use, uh, homes and/or businesses changed from being of use of natural gas to just becoming electric, so they're required to be retrofitted. Uh, again, I just wanna bring this item up to your, um, uh, knowledge and make you aware as these items are, believe will be coming again for this upcoming legislative session. And I've, I've been in other city council meetings where I've noticed or I've seen complaints from the residents saying, why is my electric bill so high? Especially during the summertime. Now imagine if your, everything runs just on electricity throughout the year, what those prices are gonna consist of. And essentially for us, for SoCal Gas, we're in no way, shape, or form against electrification, but that should be a, a matter of the residents or the owners of the home or the business owners making that choice, not something that the state imposes upon, uh, the entire state. So again, for us, it's just wanting to make you do, make, wanting us to make you aware of these items coming before and just for you guys, uh, a knowledge for your residents. Again, I look forward to working with all of you in the next couple of days. I'll be sending some information to their city manager, uh, regarding this particular matter. And one thing I forgot to mention is the notion that this is coming before us in terms of reduction of greenhouse gases. Uh, and obviously, it's very important, SoCal Gas knows it's important, and we're doing our part to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. I can share, uh, we have two projects currently worked up, we're working on with, uh, the Neil Empire Environmental Waste Company. We're working on, uh, uh, breaking down organic waste, food waste, capturing that and putting that into our pipeline. And additionally, we're also working out with our dairy farms up in the northern portion of our territory, we're, we're breaking down cow poo and break, breaking that head and putting that into our pipe, again, as we have renewable natural gas to be able to serve our, our customers. So again, thank you so much for the time, I look forward to working with all of you. Thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Um, perhaps when these bills show up before Congress or the, the Assembly, you can give us the AB, SB, or the constitutional amendment numbers. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? If I could, please?
Uh, yeah, that, I'm gonna allow this, just, we're coming up on a section, it's the council reports, and, and I'm gonna move into that so you can answer under council reports, if that's okay?
Uh, well, I just wanted to speak to Mr. Yost's comment.
Yeah, can you do that under council reports, please? That, that's where it is. So...
Very quickly, um, did we get the public?
That's what I, that's what I was about to ask. So the public speaker that wanted to speak under item eleven, did they fill out a form?
No, Tony did not. She just gave me these items, so I assume she wanted to speak. I'm not sure.
Okay, well, I don't see Ms. Nelson in here, so, um, I'm gonna go ahead, I'm, I'm gonna go ahead and close the pub, I don't even know if she's here, so, um, did she just wanna hand out her items?
She didn't indicate, so she was here, I just assumed she was going to speak on them.
Okay, well, she, not being in the chamber, and I'm gonna go ahead and close the public comments and, and we can address it if she comes back. Okay, that brings us to council reports, uh, including city-related meetings attended. I'm gonna actually announce, this was supposed to be moved to the end of the agenda, that's where I'd prefer to take it. Uh, I know Mayor Vixor moved that up under his, his leadership, uh, but we're, going in the future, we're gonna move that back to right after new business. Uh, but today, since it's here, we're gonna go ahead and, and take care of it. Mr. Federico, we're gonna let you go first, and we'll get to your comments.
I only have, uh, two meetings to, uh, to report, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I met with the, since our last council meeting, met with the Director of Coastal Animal Services Authority and spoke about, uh, animal services that relate to Dana Point and my being appointed as the Board of Directors there. And then, uh, recently attended the League of California Cities, uh, New Council Member Academy, uh, up in Irvine, they held one up in Irvine this time. A lot of good information, nothing significant to report, uh, for the council or the public, but we will be, I will be paying close attention to all the new legislation. They spend a lot of time on new legislation in particular, and I know, Mr. Mayor, you're, uh, well aware of that stuff.
Right. Thank you. Ms. Lewis?
Thank you. First, I wanted to address Mr. Yost's comment about the length of the meeting, and, believe me, we appreciate that we don't wanna be here that long either. But unfortunately, this is the only place that we can discuss any of the public, any of the business of this council because of the Brown Act. So if we want to have more than two of us sitting down and talking about something, especially anything that's going to require a decision, we have to do it up here, we have to do it at a notice meeting, and we have to do it in front of the public because this is the public's business, so... So I, I completely understand. We, uh, we try to keep them as short as we can, but there was just a lot to do on that last meeting because we only had one that month, so we had to shove everything into that. The other thing I wanted to talk about was last week, a couple days ago, Congressman Levin, our new congressman here for the forty-ninth district, uh, has an office that he is starting to staff here in the Dana Point City Hall, and he met with Councilman Levin, or Congressman Levin, met with me and a couple other residents, and we talked about, um, Santa Nofree. So he has started a task force at Santa Nofree, it is being headed by, um, Rear Admiral and, um, a former NRC chairman. So he was very excited about that, he's looking into permanently getting rid of the waste that's sitting on the beach at Santa Nofree. Uh, we talked about beach erosion particularly, the beach erosion happening now at Capo Beach, and what can be done about that, as he is sitting on the, on the Committee for Natural Resources and chairs a subcommittee for oceans. And we also talked about residential recovery facilities. So I just wanted to let people know that we are starting a, a relationship with our new congressman, he's right here, his office will be staffed with one permanent person and part-time people, so feel free to go in there and let the congressman know what's on your mind. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Mr. Vixor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have nothing to report, I've turned in my list of meetings to the clerk.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tim Wyatt?
Uh, I have turned in my list of meetings to the city clerk, but a couple of, uh, comments. Uh, a week and a half ago, I guess now, uh, the county, countywide, there was a, um, a point, a homelessness, homeless point in time count, done by the county to try to, uh, get the entire count in a given block of time. There were four sessions of it. But I wanted to, um, acknowledge that, uh, our, our Economic Development Manager, Kelly Renders, and, uh, and that Dana Point staffer, Rachel Johnson, were out on the street, out in the, on the street and in the, and then counting at, at five o'clock in the morning when it was about forty degrees and breezy out, as I know. So, uh, I wanted to make sure that they were acknowledged and thanked for putting in the effort. I also attended a meeting on, uh, with the county, uh, and ACCOC on, um, on affordable housing financing, uh, and, uh, started, uh, progress is starting to come together there. And out of that meeting, uh, something that maybe, uh, when Supervisor Bartlett's here, we might get a chance to, uh, let her tell us a little more about it if she has a moment. The county is now working on building out a mental health facility in the city of Orange and a campus there, um, long overdue, and the funding is coming together, so that's very exciting for us to deal with a crisis center, a mental health center here in, in our area. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Wyatt. Um, let's see, so what just happened in the last three weeks? So, I've been, I was officially, uh, elected the chairman of the Orange County Fire Authority to, about a week ago, two weeks, it's like all blur. I've been to my first, uh, Regional Planning and Highways Subcommittee meeting over at OCTA, uh, working with Supervisor Bartlett there and some other really great electives from around the county, dealing with a lot of issues that are going on, uh, here in, in South County. Right now, we're mainly focused north a little bit on the, uh, four oh five widening project, uh, but we're having a lot of discussions about how do we still address some of the issues that we're having here down south. Where else have I been? It's been, it's been a lot. I haven't added, I haven't put together my list of meetings, so I've forgotten a little bit, but I'll get that turned into you, so, uh, that concludes my report. So that brings us to, uh, the public hearings, we have none tonight, uh, and we are gonna go to unfinished business, and it looks like we have one item. It's the Long-Term Financial Plan Budget Priorities Workshop Facilities. Just real quickly, before we get into this, I wanna make sure everybody understands, when Supervisor Bartlett gets here, no matter where we are on this item, I'm gonna take a break, and we're gonna go ahead and do that presentation, and we can come back to it. So, uh, you know, Mr. Sumi, Sumi, you know, you see how fast we're going, she better get her, pretty soon we may be done. So, uh, number thirteen, Long-Term Financial Plan Budget Priorities Workshop Facilities Project Priorities and Budget Process Update. Do we have a staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a following item from the item you had at your last meeting where the council discussed priorities for facilities and parks, uh, projects. Uh, we wanted to summarize those projects that were discussed at your last meeting, um, and just confirm with you, uh, what those projects were, and, uh, get your, uh, referral of any projects that you want to see move forward and prioritize that are not currently identified over to the Capital, uh, Improvement Project Ad Hoc Committee of your council, which, which consists of the mayor and council member Lewis, uh, for further discussion, prioritization before it comes back later on in the budget process. And so we're available, uh, for any questions or comments you might have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, anything from council before we ask for public comment? Okay, Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments on this item?
No, we don't, other than the handout I just provided you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll bring it back to council. Uh, Mr. Federico?
Uh, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'm comfortable with, uh, this list and all of these items going to the Capital Projects Subcommittee for Consideration and Prioritization, uh, with the exception of item thirteen B, which finishes with, or seek long-term financing and debt. So I would like to ask that the subcommittee not consider any projects now that require debt. I think that's separate from what our, 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 our policy talks about, which is identifying money now, and if our project doesn't fit in now, we can, we can try to find money for it later, but, uh, otherwise I have no issues with, with any of the items listed.
All right.
For consideration.
Thank you very much. Uh, actually, I'm gonna, I usually wouldn't do this, but I'm gonna act, kind of break from my routine here and talk about item thirteen directly. The reason this was put on, um, oh, we're gonna take a break right now because Supervisor Bartlett's here, and we're gonna go ahead and do the presentation. I know she's busy, and if she doesn't have anything after this, I'm sure she would look forward to getting home early tonight 'cause it doesn't happen often. Yeah, come on up.
Sorry for the delay, it's probably the different events and places tonight. So I'm really pleased to be here, back in my home city of Dana Point. So I'm really pleased to be here back in my home city of Dana Point, and thank you for having me on your agenda this evening. I'd like to say that it's fantastic to see Dana Point now has a city seat on OCTA's Board of Directors. Jill Miller has really hit the ground floor running, and we're so pleased to have him on the Transportation Agency. One of the many great programs that I'm really proud of at OCTA is Project V, known as the Community Circulator Programs. And I've always been advocating for Dana Point and our neighboring coastal cities to access a program like this for many years. So I'm very excited that we were able to get this done, and my goal is to connect all of our South County cities through the Trolley Program. We now have Dana Point, Laguna Beach, San Juan Capistrano, San Clemente, and this year Laguna Niguel is coming online. So eight out of the eleven cities are participating in Project V, and Dana Point really hit it out of the park when they included it in your master program here. Uh the program was established for cities to develop local transit services for their communities that complement regional transit services. As you know, we've had to reduce some of our bus routes in the cities, and the local circulators like Project V have really been able to fill that gap. And we have other programs like the microtransit program that we've got a pilot program for in some of the cities. So we're testing that out, and that may come to Dana Point as well. Pardon?
It's coming here soon.
If we have our way, yes, it'll be here soon. So not every route, as we know, needs a forty-foot bus operated by OCTA. The idea is that the cities know their communities best, and for this type of service, we really look to our cities and our leaders to identify the needs for a program that will work for each individual community. Every city is totally different. Some cities, the forty-foot buses work perfect, mainly in the central part of the county and northern part of the county on those bus routes. But in South County, we just don't have the need for the forty-foot buses. We don't have the ridership, and so we have to look at other options. And that's where this program is funded by OCTA through Measure M. Ninety percent of the cost is paid by OCTA and ten percent by the cities. And while this is a countywide program, I am proud that the fifth district is leading the way and implementing such successful programs. We have by far the most successful Project V programs of any of the districts. The city of Dana Point applied for Project V funding, and I'm here tonight to present a check to the council for the grant funding, so it's not a loan, it's a grant. So I know the city manager's gonna be very happy about that. And the grant funding from OCTA is in the amount of, get this, five million, one hundred and seven thousand, five hundred and forty-four dollars. We have my able-bodied assistant, Dave Simpson, from OCTA with me this evening. So this amount includes what has been awarded from OCTA over the last few years, including funding for the expansion of the service that's planned by the city. Not only is this great news for Dana Point residents and businesses, but it also is great for our visitors. So congratulations, Dana Point, and at this time, I'd like to have the mayor come down and to take a photo.
Five million dollar check and expect him not to speak. So I want to thank Supervisor Bartlett for all of her great leadership. The only reason I was able to hit the ground running is because all the time we spent together on TCA and other, and OCFA and working together on county issues, what made it very easy for me, me to be effective as soon as I got there. I want to thank her for all of her work on Project V. She is a true leader in this area. She worked hard to make sure Dana Point, I'm assuming you worked hard because I wasn't there yet, so, and she always works hard for us. Uh and guaranteeing that Dana Point received, we came in number one in the funding this year. We got about two million this year specifically because we are, we are the hub of this entire transportation wheel down in this area. We have Dana Point's kind of the center of Laguna Beach, San Juan Capistrano, Laguna Niguel, and now San Clemente. So I'm very proud to be part of this. I really want to say thank you to the supervisor for all the work she's done uh on behalf of Dana Point as a supervisor, and especially the eight years she's served here on the council. And as in her last year, she was the mayor, so she did quite a bit for for this community. I really want to say thank you. All right, that'll take us back to item thirteen. And like I said, I I usually wouldn't break in on this, but uh this is kind of unique that we have a list of projects from from an individual resident here. And the reason that happened, I want to ask Ms. Ms. uh Louis about this. Staff did this because Ms. Louis brought it up at the last meeting, that these were important to her, and I just want to confirm that that these are the issue, the items you wanted on here. Is that correct, Ms. Louis?
I'm actually just comparing it now. I literally just got this letter like everyone else, so.
Well, I think this was a letter from last week, the last meeting that was handed out to us, and it had this list on it. And you mentioned it at the last meeting that this is what you were looking for.
Right, but I'm saying the one I'm looking at now is dated February fifth. Apparently, Ms. Nelson just turned it in, so I'm just comparing it to what's on here. But my understanding, maybe you can clarify, as the subcommittee of capital improvement, is that we're going to look at all projects. I I wasn't aware that we were constrained by anybody's list. We were gonna sit down, talk about all of the projects, and come up with, I guess, not prioritize, but a list of projects that we felt that needed to be addressed, bring back those recommendations to the council, and the council was going to discuss it. So whether it's it's debt financed, not financed, that wasn't really gonna be part of the discussion at this point. That's my understanding.
Well, I, you know, and I'm not sure you're incorrect about that, but I think tonight was about what are we gonna put on the list? How is it gonna get on there? And then absolutely, we'll go back to the CIP, which you and I sit on, and and there will be some prioritization taking place there, but tonight is more of a a night to talk about, are these the items? Is this the complete list that we're gonna send back, and then the CIP ad hoc will come back with with recommendations on prioritization, then we can have that discussion.
That's what I'm saying. When you say send this back, this, this is the list you're sending back to the CIP Subcommittee?
Yes.
So there might be something we think of, or when talking to staff in the meeting, there might be something that comes up that's not on this list. I don't want to have to come back and say, oh, you know, we we wanted to discuss something.
An ad hoc is no different than than a subcommittee that if it comes up there, we can bring it back. We're making recommendations back to the.
Okay, I just want to make sure that I'm, we're not constrained to this particular list and only this list.
So so, but this is kind of unusual. So are these your items that you would like to put on so far tonight? And there may be something you could add later, but but these are all something you want.
Okay, well, I think Mr. Wyatt had comments, so why don't you let me look at this while he comments, and then I can say yea, your name.
Okay, it comes to Ms. Vexork next.
Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll echo Councilman Federico's concerns with going into debt and how that contravenes a policy as we've stated it. And this won't take long. I want to add two items to the list.
Okay.
First item I'd like to add is a community pool. And the second item I'd like to add is a a large active park. Uh in other words, something that might have a baseball field for the youth baseball players, maybe play soccer on, uh could have events in the outfield, those types of things. So hopefully, that's clear, a a large active park. Uh that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Wyatt.
I I'm sorry, Mayor Proton Wyatt. I hated it when people didn't use that for me, so I'll make sure.
I, either way, I will respond. So I think that the purpose of this reform list, which we can still add to, of course, was to, there were specific items that we brought up in our last meeting that we wanted to have on the list for consideration. So Mr. Denny collected our notes and wanted to respond to make sure that the things that we specifically requested, as I recall, Councilmember Federico mentioned a skate park, so he wanted to get that on here and other things. And but that in no way limits what the CIP Subcommittee considers as they look at the list. They should also collect items and put them on and prioritize them, and ultimately, they come back to council. In terms of the debt, et cetera, on here, I uh I don't think the CIP Subcommittee is going to tell us how to finance things. So when it comes back with a list, it will be up to the council to look at where the money is going to come from. So I think that's, while it may, it's an unnecessary piece of data on here, but it shouldn't affect anything.
Okay. All right, so you have nothing else to add to it? Okay, so uh yeah, I think that's a, that's a valid, that's a valid point that the CIP is not gonna be talking about if we're gonna incur debt or or how we're gonna start paying for these things. That's a council discussion in general. So I I take that for for what you're saying, is I agree, we shouldn't be discussing that down there. We can scratch that piece of it off uh if we're okay with that, and that that level of conversation will come back. So that brings us back to Ms. Louis, and are you okay with these?
Uh yes, there's one, um, Mr. City Manager said he went through the list. There's one item on Ms. Nelson's February fifth letter that is not on the list, uh statued at Pines Park, so if we could add that.
What was that?
Uh statue at Pines Park.
Of what?
Uh under capital park maintenance slash improvements. She had multiple items. It's on the, her list here.
Okay.
And one other thing, I was contacted by Lantern Bay Estates Property Manager about lighting and um in a discussion with Mr. City Manager. My understanding is that that is incorporated into item eleven, and the city will be discussing it, but it has, it will be brought back at another meeting, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, just wanted them to know, we were, we were paying attention to what they need.
Okay?
Yep.
All right, so you're good with everything that was on here? So I I've got my item on here. The US Postal Post Office has always been one of my big items. I agree with the community pool. That is something I brought up a while ago, not such, so much as a community pool, but something USA Water Pool was looking for. And when you talk about baseball, I'm always a big fan. So anywhere we can play baseball in the city, I'm happy about. However, on item thirteen, I would like to discuss a few of these items because I don't think they reach the level of facilities. They more, they're more maintenance. And so, you know, enhanced slope areas, I mean, is that a maintenance issue? I don't understand how that would rise to a capital improvement. I'm not, I'm saying these are good things, but I think they may be in the wrong place.
Yeah, based on the way I read it, she's asking for additional mulch to be placed on the slopes, and that it, that would be a maintenance activity.
Right, so uh that's C, D, repair paint stucco on E, that sounds like maintenance to me, Chloe Lit-Luke overlook. And most of these sound like maintenance items to me. Is that correct?
Generally, generally, everything C through G would be considered maintenance activity with the exception of a sculpture at the east side of Bowl overlooking Beach Road under C. And that could be the statue that's referenced in the letter that was received tonight.
Okay, so a statue would fall under arts of culture, correct? Would be considered art.
And the Arts and Culture Commission is undertaking a process. They've actually been doing it for months now, where they're evaluating each individual park site throughout the city and identifying those sites that are, that do not have any art in parks and going through an evaluation process to identify potential locations, potential themes, materials, et cetera, and then prioritizing those ideas. And they will come back to your council at some point with some ideas for additional art in parks.
Okay, because it's my understanding, there's already sculpture in Pines Park, correct? Okay, all right, so I, my recommendation is that we go ahead and and move items C through G over to the maintenance and and take it off of capital improvement because that, this just all seems like maintenance of facilities we already already have. Do you have any comment on that?
I'll second that. I have a comment, yes.
Okay.
Um, okay, so on C, it says, uh, let's see, connect bowl area to upper area, east side of Bowl overlooking Beach Ranch, construct a restroom. I I wouldn't think those are maintenance. Are those maintenance? That sounds like capital to me. Construct a restroom, that's.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry I missed that.
I skipped over that one.
And.
You're correct.
Connect bowl area to upper area.
That's, that's good. We can, we can put that one back on with the exception of the sculpture we'll move over to.
Yeah, uh, let's see. Enhance playground. I mean, I'd rather we just kind of hash this out when we have the subcommittee. We can always decide this is maintenance, this isn't, this isn't capital, and come back to the.
Well, I, but I think that's something we can handle right here. I mean, most of this, I understand what you're saying, but we have a large list that we're gonna be, we're going through. So if we could reduce that here, if the council looks at this and says, you know, this is maintenance, I agree with you on C, we can take that off uh because I didn't catch the the restroom and connecting the bowl areas. Uh I, and I, and it kind of got me because I, I've always heard they want a dog park down in that area, and that's how I thought that would happen, so.
So what, what happens then, what if we put it on the, instead of capital improvements, we put it on maintenance? How does that get addressed then in terms of, is there a list somewhere?
Some of this work is already underway.
Uh huh.
Um and some of it will be budgeted in the next budget, so we can follow up with you to show how that's being done.
Okay, so we can, how do we report back to Ms. Nelson and the people in Capo?
I can report back to the council.
Okay.
Right. Okay, so I guess we'll take a vote on that. Where every, that, I'm gonna amend the motion. It's gonna be D through G. But we're gonna leave C on for the capital improvement list to go to the ad hoc committee.
And is playground equipment, would that be, that would be maintenance?
Yeah.
Well, let me just clarify, if I could, with Mr. City Manager. Is there anything on the list that we are removing that looks like it would be capital versus maintenance? Because I don't want to take anything off that you would consider capital.
No, these are, these are all maintenance activities, with the exception of the restroom, connecting the bowl to the upper area, and building a sculpture.
Right, so C, we're keeping on, so we're just talking D through G.
Right, I'm saying we'll put C back on the list. D through G will come off and go into maintenance.
D through G all looks like maintenance, okay.
Okay, I've amended my motion. Do you accept my amendment?
Accept.
Okay, I'll call for the vote on that. We can do it by voice, voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right. Any opposed? No. Okay, we'll go ahead and do an electronic vote. Okay. Madam Clerk? We're gonna go ahead and do an electronic vote on it. I only have four members' votes, so.
Oh, sorry, yes.
Okay, you're okay with it?
Oh, yeah.
All right, then passage unanimously. All right, thank you very much. Okay, that brings us to item fourteen.
Mr. Mayor, before we move on, can I, now that we've decided what we're gonna send down, I do, I have one point of clarification.
Okay.
I I did understand you to say it's, we're sending this down to the CIP Subcommittee. Uh where, I'm not on that Subcommittee, so I want to understand what's gonna happen there. Is one of the things going to be done is prioritizing these projects, bringing it back to the council with recommendations?
Yes.
Uh, okay, so I I heard that, correct me if I misunderstood, but that the the financing isn't. Okay, so I heard that... correct me if I misunderstood, but that the financing isn't going to be taken into account. I'm not exactly clear what that meant, and I would think, obviously, the price of what these projects are would be taken into account in determining how to prioritize these various items. So, maybe I could get some clarification on what the CIP Committee... Subcommittee is going to be doing if you're going to consider that or not.
So, we're not going to consider debt financing. We will actually absolutely consider the cost of the project before we prioritize it, so it... you know, and we can decide how we're going to do that right now. They're prioritized one, two, and three. One is an absolute necessity. Two is something that's going to happen in the near future. Three is something that is a nice-to-have. That could change based on the cost, and if we can fund something that we would really like to see. But that's what... that piece of it will come back when we make the recommendations, and the discussion will happen here on how we're going to... how we will ultimately end up prioritizing them.
Thank you.
Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Moving on to 14. This is the Strategic Plan Review and Performance Measures. Mr. City Manager, do we have a staff report?
We do. And while Rachel pulls that up, thank you, Rachel. I've just got some brief slides that I'm going to go through with you here this evening, and I will get you copies of these, and then we'll be posting them as well for the public's benefit. This is our first update since the council adopted the plan, and so these are generally annual metrics, as well as some metrics that are in development. We're going to spend this year continuing to collect the numbers and refine them, so that when we roll into this time next year, when it's time to update the plan, we'll have some recommendations for you about that. But let me start by just reminding everyone the vision and mission statements that the council adopted when it adopted the plan. A vibrant world-class place, and our mission to set the standard for an exceptionally livable city. We did set a new set of value statements as well for the organization to communicate both internally, externally. Moving on to Goal Number One, and I'll go through each one of the goal sections, and then I'll go through the project list. So, Goal Number One, so your first priority is for a livable community and world-class place with a statement of Dana Point prides itself in creating and maintaining a safe, livable, and unique world-class coastal city. So, we try and accomplish that by looking at our Part One crimes, and as you can see, we stay pretty consistent, year to year, between 17 and 18. And as you discussed at length at the last council meeting, our Part Two crimes are up a little bit from 2018 over 2017. The good news is our call responses down year over year, and our motor vehicle accidents are down year over year, so certainly some good news. In terms of maintaining, enhancing our unique sense of place, the number of code enforcement cases is up, and we have been a little more proactive of late. And what we are working to establish, and we've got a strategic plan project where we're going to bring back to you a sort of code enforcement manual, where we talk about the process a little bit, is to better understand those cases that we can resolve with just one contact, and we've not measured those in the past, and we're working to establish our process, so that we do that going forward. We do have a number of metrics that are sort of boxes that we check, if you will, and so in terms of the statement, Dana Point is prepared for natural man-made emergencies. We keep our emergency plan current per all the applicable standards. We do at least one exercise per year. We make sure we maintain our tsunami and storm-ready certification, and we keep all of our flood and disaster mapping current. Moving on to Goal Two, effective, efficient, and innovative government. The city is wisely governed and managed so that its services are provided in an effective and efficient manner that meets or exceeds the expectations of its residents. So, we try and accomplish that by providing world-class service to the community and implement continuous service improvement processes. So, we did... we measure our trolley ridership. It does have a down arrow, but I think the number is maybe just about 100 or so, so it's not significantly... pretty consistent ridership year over year. We're still working on the metric for business processes automated or improved through technology and innovation. We like to maintain our public works assets in a safe, clean, and quality condition. So, we keep our pavement condition index between 75 and 80. That's Matt's regular goal that we remind him of daily. And we get our graffiti and other damaged city facilities fixed 68% of the time within 24 hours. Now, we're working on that metric, and that's probably going to be one that we're going to revisit with you as we update the plan next year in terms of setting the expectation when we communicate with the public and commit to an action, and then the follow-up action getting actually done, because sometimes it'll take us more than 24 hours to repair, you know, a sign that's been run over, or irrigation that's broken, or something like that. The good news is that the number of claims associated with physical infrastructure conditions are flat year over year. In terms of the recruiting, developing, and retaining high-performance employees, we've got the percentage of employees receiving exceptional reviews, the total number of training hours completed, and then we're implementing a new program this year based on the strategic plan, which is stretch goals for employees. And so, that's a good thing that we'll be rolling out here this week, actually. Moving on to Goal Three, fiscally responsible and accountable. The goal statement being that city revenues and expenses are responsibly managed to ensure a balanced budget, adequate funding for core services, capital improvements, and adequate reserves for emergencies, while providing taxpayers accountability and transparency. Again, these are a number of sort of checkbox metrics, where we have, for example, accuracy of revenue and expenses within 5% of budget. That was a goal that we set for 2018, which we accomplished. Maintaining a system to provide public access to budget and actual spending data, which, as you know, is our OpenGov platform. Obtained GFOA award for financial reporting excellence. Each year, we want to make sure we're demonstrating best practice. We achieve no significant audit findings, and we maintain reserve levels set by the council. Additionally, effectively manage expenses for core important value-added city services. And the goal metrics there are actual expenditures for each department do not exceed authorized budget levels, which we achieved in 18. The Department 99 contingency account expenditures do not exceed 50% of the authorized budget, which was not applicable in 2017. That was something we implemented for the 2018 budget, which we achieved. And the number of organizations with which the city collaborates to provide public services, and we seek to have formal agreements with nonprofits and others that help us achieve our mission. So, in terms of maintaining the long-term financial plan, these are really about maintaining fidelity to the policies that you have established, annual council review and approval of the long-term financial plan, annual review and renewal of the city financial policies, which is coming up for 19, but you accomplished in 18, and capital and facilities plans funded and adopted in the operating budget. Moving on to Goal Four, is preserve and enhance the environmental health and sustainability of the city, and our goal statement is to promote, preserve, protect, and enhance a healthy and sustainable built and natural environment. First, of course, is preserve and protect the integrity of our ocean waters and beaches. So, we do that by maintaining our water quality improvement plan, which is not only a strategic plan goal, but a legal mandate, and that 100% of our catch basin filters and other water quality best management practices, or BMPs, are cleaned annually, and many are cleaned much more frequently than that. We had 126 days of successful operation of the ozone treatment facility at Salt Creek. Unfortunately, we did have really a doubling of beach mile days of postings or warnings, but I'll tell you that that has more to do with the change in the way the county collects and reports data, triggering those postings and closures, than it does an actual change in conditions. And so, the change from 17 and 18 seems large. What will be more interesting for us is the change between 18 and 19, where we don't see any change in the methods coming down the pipeline from the state, and so it'll be a more apples-to-apples comparison as we do that. You've set the goal of leading, by example, and implementing programs to support environmental sustainability. That means our measuring our electricity use, which is down year over year, measuring our gasoline use, which shows up year over year, but I'll tell you that this is one where I think we're a victim of better record-keeping in this case, because we have implemented hybrid vehicles in our fleet, and we've substantially reduced the number of vehicles in our fleet. And so, we'll continue to refine that. We've got a measurement of potable water, and we'll continue to measure that going forward. And as you see, we've sent 56 of recycled... 56% of our recycled waste diverted from landfill, and the state requirement is 50. We did three waste collection events in 2018, and I'll take this opportunity to make a public announcement, information announcement, that we are going to be rescheduling the bulky item collection event for this Saturday due to the rain that's scheduled to occur. And Matt, do we have a date that we've rescheduled that for yet? I put him on the spot here.
If the... good evening, Council. If the event is canceled, we would go to the May date, but we are actively looking at the weather, and Mr. City Manager, we may be looking at that again before noon tomorrow and making the final call.
Great. Generally, it's not good to have a bulky item pickup date when it's raining. Educating the community on the importance of protecting environmental health is a goal set by the council. So, we did nine public workshops and events on waste reduction. We educated 220 students through collaborative programs, mainly through our partnership with the Ocean Institute. We had 332 attendees to our science programs, Science Nights. We had 25,710 visitors to the Nature Interpretive Center, and we had 387 students attend programs at the NIC last year. Finally, on Goal Five, Foster Economic Health and Prosperity. Our goal statement being promote a healthy and growing economy reflecting the community's vision and values. We've got... provide the public transparent, predictable, and efficient process for managing cities' land use and business regulations. You see, the planning applications is TBD. We're going to move that to building applications, since that process is more measurable and more black and white. You see, we've got the number on recycled waste again. We do customer surveys for the customers that visit us at the planning counter and building counter. They get a text message, and they can respond really quickly and easily. So, 91% say that they got all their questions answered. 92% say that the staff is helpful. We set goals for ourselves to update our planning documents on an annual basis, which we've accomplished the last two years. I wish I could say the same for our friends at the Coastal Commission, who are still sitting on two of our zone text amendments, but we've got our fingers crossed. And we actively collaborate with business to foster, revive, or enhance the climate and economic vitality of our community, and we've got some general sort of economic metrics in here in terms of the commercial vacancy rate, lodging occupancy rate, local unemployment, and a number of local jobs. The last page I want to go over are, in terms of our metrics, are the community survey results, maintaining and ensuring public safety. This year, we tested the question about how do folks feel about their perception of safety walking in the neighborhood at night and in city parks? And then, we put a priority on maintaining, enhancing Dana Point's unique sense of place. And as you see, we were able to check all the boxes with the goals we set in those metrics. We want to provide world-class service to the community and implement continuous service improvement processes. 80% are satisfied with the job we're doing in providing services. 76 agree that we provide consistent level of service, and 91% agree that our staff is professional, accessible, and helpful. And then, we've set some communication goals that frankly are opportunities for us going forward, when 44% say the city listens to residents when making important decisions. And we were happy to see the growth. You see that we did ask the question in 2017. We also asked the same question in 2018, that provided a response that said the percentage that is satisfied with the city's communication efforts to the community through local publications, the internet, and other means went from 59 to 72. So, I'm moving on now to... the plan also included a number of projects, and so I've organized them here by goal number, and we'll provide just a brief update for you. We've got one that looks to analyze service costs primarily relative to public safety services and comparing resident versus visitor. We found this one to be more challenging than we expected. The data is hard to get at and hard to find, and so this is one that's going to take us a little bit of time and probably cause us to want to identify a partner, perhaps in academia, that can help us do some type of academic analysis of this question, and that's why I've left it as to be determined. The second is to enhance... Excuse me, Mr. City Manager, I got a quick question on this. Yes, sir. You're talking about service costs between resident and visitor, and you're looking at public safety interactions. I'm assuming that you're talking about every time one of our visitors reacts with our public safety personnel, that that's what's hard? But you don't take into consideration all of the visitors we have that never interact with public safety that are still... we still need to protect, correct?
That's correct, and that, I think, highlights one of the challenges of looking into this question.
And you said that you're looking for a consultant, or... I didn't quite catch what you said. Could you repeat what you said?
Well, I think what we've found is that we're probably going to need to find somebody, either an academic or a consultant, that can help us, you know, sort of theorize this and find some data that can produce something useful.
Okay. All right, I guess my concern is if we can't find a consultant, and you're looking for an academic, we're not talking about an academic exercise that says this could happen. We need real-world information on this if we're going to do this type of analysis. So, I don't fully grasp what we're trying to accomplish here, but, you know, it's something I guess we talked about, and maybe we'll come back to it. Okay. Great. I'll go through these and then open it up to questions of the council, if you like. The second project is to enhance community engagement in city-led service programs like Neighborhood Watch, volunteers, and police services. I'm working actively with Lieutenant Sheehan and her staff. We had a great holiday event for the VIPS. We are updating all of our marketing materials for VIPS, and on this one, this is one where we will report to you in our next report in January on how we've done. And so, it'll be the delta between how many VIPS and Neighborhood Watch folks did we start with, and how many did we end with, and how did we do for the year in terms of encouraging folks to join us. As I mentioned earlier, moving on to the next page, we do have a project to... we called it a code enforcement strategy, and we actually have an existing document that we're working to update, and we'll bring back to your council this spring to... for... to fulfill this project, which will outline the whole approach and the way we accomplished code enforcement. Moving on, Goal Two. So, this was a unique one. Give employees the challenge, responsibility, authority, and make city government more effective, efficient, innovative, and reward success for doing so, so that innovative and continuous improvement will become part of the city. As you know, as a part of the Dana Point Employees Association contract that we negotiated this last year, we did incorporate a couple of new ideas where the city and the employees will work together to create incentive programs to incent employees to come forward with new ideas, and we are in the process of implementing that now, and I thank the council for its leadership in doing so. The next goal is to measure employee engagement. We'll be working with the Gallup Corporation, and we'll report back to your council on those results. The Goal Three, complete implementation of priority-based budget process. We are in process having our second priority-based budget discussion tonight, and CIP Subcommittee and the council will be actively engaged in that process as we move forward. And the next is to review large contract scopes and develop and issue new RFPs. Our first is on the street literally as we speak, and look forward to seeing the results of that. We completely rewrote that document. This is for our tree maintenance contract, and so we'll look forward to see what the results are of that. Moving on to Goal Four... Moving on to goal four. We've got a goal of street sweeping and storm drain cleaning policies and frequencies so that trash on our beaches and from the watership is reduced further. That will be manifested in the budget proposal that you'll see for the next two-year budget. Matt and his staff will look at our current policies and see if any adjustments are necessary and what adjustments might be needed budgetarily for that. Moving on to goal five. Completing an economic analysis of city land use as a precursor to a general plan update. This will be a project that Kelly Renders, our Economic Development Manager, will lead. And it will lead into the next project, which will be probably the city, city's big, herodocious goal that organizations like to talk about in updating a general plan. So we'll look forward to that. And with that, I am available for any further questions or discussion. And again, I thank the council for its leadership in adopting this plan and look forward to continuing to report our results and getting your feedback. And as we look at, you know, next year, continue to iterate and improve as we go forward. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Denny. I'm gonna ask for public comments real quick before we start.
No, I have none, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I'll go ahead and close comments and we'll go around the horn, Councilmember Federico.
I'd just like to say, first of all, thank you, staff and Mr. City Manager, for putting all that work into pulling that data so we can assess how well we're doing and tying it to the resident survey. And it's supposed to inform the budget without getting down the rabbit hole of questioning the strategic plan at this point in time. Because I know we have a programmed way that we're gonna do that after the budget cycle. I do wanna say that I'm a firm believer in having a strategic plan and that these projects ought to be stepping stones toward achieving whatever that goal is. So when the, when the time comes to look at the strategic plan, I'll have a lot of input for it. And I think we can, it's great to have it and I think we can make it a lot better.
Ms. Lewis?
Thank you. Can we go back to some of the slides? So goal two, the first goal two, not the?
No. Metrics? Probably.
Yeah. Yeah, thanks. Okay, so I just wanted to clarify, I was a little confused. So I'm looking at page three of our staff report for item nine.
Okay.
Okay, so it sets out ridership passengers, which seem to be different than the numbers up here. So are the ones on the staff report, is that just summer?
Yeah, I think the number of the strategic plan is inclusive of all special events.
Okay.
That's the difference.
Okay, so there's, so these summers, there's actually more. So there was a hundred and seven, two hundred and seventeen thousand in twenty seventeen, the whole year? With all the special events and everything?
Correct.
No, I'm getting no.
No?
The numbers you see in staff report for the trolley item.
Yeah.
Relate to the boardings during the summer season.
Okay.
The ones you see on the metrics, I believe, include the summer season plus special events.
Which is what I said.
Okay, so.
Is that what you just said?
Yeah, that's what I said.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm just confirming what you just said.
Okay, thank you. I was just confused and I wanted to make sure I, I had this right when I.
It's okay, it's Groundhog Day, it happens.
Okay, then, um, goal three, if we could go to that slide, please. Okay, so the first item under maintain a transparent and balanced budget, blah, blah, blah. Accuracy of revenues and expenses within five percent of budget. Is that five percent of the original budget? Or five percent of the budget after we've adjusted the budget?
It's five percent of the operating budget.
Right.
Adjusted budget, correct?
So the last time we adjusted, it's within five percent of that, not the original budget? Okay. Do we have any policy as to accuracy in revenues and expenses within original budget? And, and is this a policy, the five percent of budget period, is that a policy?
This is your city council's goal.
Oh, it's our goal, okay. And is our goal within, do we have any goal with respect to accuracy in revenues and expense, revenues and expenses within the original budget? No. Okay. That's something. You okay? You okay there? Okay, good. So that's something I guess I would like to explore. We don't have to do that tonight, but maybe when we meet, we talk about finances, explore that.
Correct.
Okay, so, and then it said exceed budget. So that also was the adjusted, not exceeding, because there's a checkmark somewhere.
Yes.
So that's also talking about our adjusted. So we may have adjusted the budget like, you know, a month or two before the actuals come out.
Correct.
And so that's, all right. All right, so that's something else. Goal four, please. Okay, so where it says gas use? It says lead by example in implementing programs to support environmental sustainability. So here's something I'd like to explore and I'm not sure what the proper mechanism would be for that. But we're a city of six square miles. And I know you said we're moved, we've moved to hybrids. But exploring moving to electric vehicles and putting in charging stations at the city hall and around town so we can encourage people, first of all, who have electric vehicles, to use them and to charge. And also the city so that we're not using gas at all. Where is something where we could explore?
Well, we're already actively doing that, that's why we have hybrids now.
Right.
That was our first sort of toe in the pool.
Okay.
And so we are, we, with every turn of an individual vehicle, we're looking at every single option available to the city. The challenge has been we budgeted extremely conservatively on the access, acquiring of new vehicles, and the electrics are more expensive.
Is there any plan to put charging stations around the city?
I don't believe we have any at the moment. We do have two downstairs, two downstairs now.
Downstairs at city hall?
Uh huh.
And are those available for people?
Yes.
And are those the fast charging stations or?
I don't know how fast they are, but.
Because I know there's a whole bunch of different types of charging stations.
Be happy to show them to you.
Okay.
And I know there are some programs coming from the state to grants that will help communities install these things.
Okay. And how do we let people know we have charging stations? Is that somewhere?
We've got signage downstairs, I believe.
Well, I guess signage downstairs if you know they're in city hall, right?
Right.
But is there a sign anywhere, if you're in town, saying, you know, charging stations this way or anything?
Not that I'm aware of, Matt, are you aware of any?
We might wanna let people know they can charge their car. I assume it's a pay?
Ours is not, no.
Oh, yours is not?
No.
Oh, then maybe we don't want to let people, but I won't either. Okay. So anyway, that's something we can discuss. Waste reduction. When I was walking around the city with Hoi An Ip, I noticed that I was carrying trash and I didn't have any place to throw it. So if we could look at more trash cans and recycle trash cans. So I know when I was in, down in Encinitas, they had the recycle trash cans that were solar. And they have the little, it looks like a mailbox almost. And you open it and you put your recycle in there and it's solar. So is there any availability to put more trash cans and recycle around the city?
I think if you provide us some hotspots where that's occurred, we could certainly look at it. Also, all the trash that's picked up out of trash cans gets sorted at a recycling facility. So nothing ends up in the waste stream, it all gets separated.
Okay.
So that's important, that's why we don't, out in those public spaces, have recycle and trash. Because what ends up happening is the public just throws trash in the recycle and trash in the trash. You end up sorting it anyway. So that's why you see just one can, because it's being processed.
So do we, as a city, pay to have that trash picked through and recycled?
One of the awesome things for this council to know is that your franchise includes that service already. So CRNR picks up that trash and processes that at no charge to the city.
Okay, great. And if we put more trash cans around, that'll be all in our franchise fee?
Absolutely.
Perfect, okay. Yes, I did have to walk around for a few blocks holding trash.
I do it pretty often on a bike, it's pretty challenging.
Yeah, yeah, it would be nice if we could dump it somewhere. Okay, and so educating, educate community on importance of protecting the health environment. So we are a non-smoking city. So I just wanted to talk about the progress of educating people who live in the city and don't live in the city, that we are now a non-smoking city. How do we, how do we do that? Because they still walk around, especially like at the Ralphs and the Starbucks, people just.
We've done extensive social media. I think the first banner on our webpage is about our no smoking policy. We've got dozens of signs up in hotspots that have been reported to us, as well as signage up at each playground in the city, different signage for the playground. It's actually beautiful artwork done by Shana Sharkey. And so we appreciate her good work. And so, so yes. And we've also implemented the flashing traffic sign, particularly in the summertime when we have more visitors, letting them know that it's a smoke-free city.
I also noticed that when I go into Laguna Niguel, they have the flashing sign about the loud noise now with the state change. Or is that something we're enforcing? Because I've heard several residents tell me, especially I think it was on Discover, Discovery, and Selva, and a couple, and PCH that the motorcycles go by or cars go by and it's really noisy.
The last time I asked Lieutenant Sheehan about this, she had indicated that Deputy Poitras has already written numerous, I'm in the tens, if not more, citations for loud exhaust. When he's not writing speeding citations on a no-tolerance policy.
Does that, does the money for the citations go to the city, the state? Does it get divvied up?
It gets divvied up.
Okay, so it's not just all ours. So I just wanna let people know that's, we're not doing it because that's just to generate revenue for us. These are real problems.
No, it's a net cost to us.
Oh, is it?
To generate those citations, absolutely.
Wow, we have to talk about that. And then the last thing I have is you said you wanted to hire a consultant about public safety. Does, does that take in the cost for our public safety? Are we breaking it down to, bless you, safety and public safety costs? Because we have residential recovery facilities, safety costs at the harbor. Because we, we have the harbor, right? We patrol the harbor, the city?
Yes.
In exchange for the sales tax revenue, right?
And transient occupancy tax as well.
Okay, so when we break that down into revenue, visitors slash resident, does that take into account those two areas? Because I would think that residential recovery facilities are going to be a cost center for our safety and emergency care as well as the harbor. All right, you need some water?
You know, I'm gonna look to Mayor Protem Wyatt. He really took the lead on this particular project goal. And I don't know that it was really ever anticipated to look at a type of land use. It was more trying to, I think, and again, I don't wanna put words in your mouth, Mayor Protem Wyatt, but looking at the correlation between the volume of visitation that we see in a beachside town with the costs of providing public safety services. So I don't know that really you had in mind anything as detailed as unlicensed residential recovery facilities.
With the permission of the mayor, I will respond if I can. So the, the reason this item is on here as we look at, you know, how to understand our city, our costs and our revenues and so forth. TOT is a big revenue source to the city. And sometimes we forget the reason that TOT exists is because visitors get the same services as the residents who live here in terms of safety and traffic and all of the various services. And since they're not paying property tax, TOT replaces that to offset the cost of those services. So that's why it exists and, you know, our TOT is ten percent. There, that's actually sort of at the low end in general for what many cities charge. I'm not proposing that. We have a reason to change that, but I would like to know as we look at the visitors to our city and how much of a population that's, and how much it costs us to provide the normal services that we provide to everybody, how much of those service costs are increased by having visitors here? And to respond to Mayor Miller's question about academics and stuff, Laguna Beach has a detailed study in this area going on. I actually didn't find out about it until, you know, I've been digging into this for a while. So it was an interesting debate with them. But basically, they have six-point-eight million visitor days a year. And they have two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand bed nights a year. So in Dana Point, we have about one-point-eight million visitors a year and five-hundred-thousand bed nights a year. So our economics look much better than theirs. And they're, they're thoroughly convinced that their economy is dragged down by their visitors. I'm sure their businesses don't always agree with that, but in terms of just the total number. And so they actually have five economics professors from various universities on a panel trying to analyze that data to understand what it costs, what a day visitor costs, what an overnight visitor costs, and so forth. I found their, you know, and they put us in, they put me in contact with the people so I could have that discussion and start that whole process up. And offered to share any data that they got. So certainly, I'm willing to take advantage of anything that you can learn. We didn't, we probably don't have the clout muscle to get some of the people that they've brought in from UCLA and USC and UCI and Chapman and a few other places. But, but since they've done it, it's on them, I'm certainly willing to try to understand that. But it clearly does cost us money. You know, we get twelve-plus million dollars a year in TOT. As long as our costs are less than twelve million dollars a year, then we're even or ahead. If it turned out that when we got done analyzing them, we said it cost us fifteen million dollars to handle those visitors a year, we might rethink our TOT and decide that we need to do something different there. I don't think that's the case, but nevertheless, it's, you know, we don't know. So our events, the harbor with the visitors, and, you know, the conventions, and now, you know, our visit Dana Point are gonna market us as a visitor destination, hoping to bring that number from, you know, one-point-eight to, you know, two-point-eight million or whatever. That will up our revenue, it will up our costs. We need to be prepared to fund those costs in our budget and know as they come and as we bring. And we have, what, eight or ten new hotels in our pipeline that we think we'll bring more. So the reason for having it here is that just letting it happen to us and hoping we can react fast enough seems like an approach that we'd like to avoid if we could. The more we understand the cost and the more we prepare for it, the, you know, the better we can get out ahead of that cost. you know, the the better we can get out ahead of that cost and deal with it. So that's the reason why it was put on here as a goal. I think it's uh important for us to um continue to try to understand and all the and pick all the brains we can and measure all the things we can and see um if we can, if we can uh be prepared for uh the uh visitor growth as our city um brings on more hotels and uh and promotes itself more. So that's why it's here and that's the general background of it. I had a half a dozen places we could drill down on what it costs us to provide services this up. But like everything else, we wanted to limit our overall projects and goals to five, not 55, uh because we really can't tackle things above, you know, I mean, five is kind of the maximum things that we can concentrate on any one time and actually make an impact. So we limited our general goals and uh and addressed to five when we were putting the strategic plan together. So we actually could get our arms around them. So that's why it doesn't jump into all the areas that I'd like to measure or.
Yeah, well, I was just talking about this public service because one of the curiosities I had is the harbor, we have to have our people doing the harbor in exchange for sales tax and TOT. And I was very curious, you know, is that come out as a plus, a minus or a neutral for us? And maybe in, you know, next time we start looking at a safety contract, if we had that information, that would be good to know.
It is our um our supervisor here who was here tonight and I've had this conversation. She's relatively convinced after being here a while that it does not cover, that our revenue there does not cover our costs. And she's looking to see if that's possible, but I don't really know whether that's true or not. And she didn't either. It was just a, it was just a discussion. So um it's good data to have, though, yeah.
Yes. So is that something that's in our plan to look at that specific issue of are we? Are we paying more than we're getting in patrolling?
We did not put it in the plan at this time to actually try to do a a a specific measure of that. I don't know whether, we haven't, so I haven't dealt, I haven't. Other than, other than hallway discussions of concern, I I I don't know that we have any good idea where we are on that. But we, if we started to ask around, we could probably start to get some.
Okay.
That might be something we wanna discuss.
Staff for to take a look at what the revenues are out of the harbor and what our actual costs are to cover that harbor. I think that's what it's relatively easy to determine. Uh, I will say that one of the biggest issues down there is our harbor patrol and from the county. And so that's something that's gonna be have to take a look at. So that's something else we had to look at. So uh let's go ahead and let staff take a look at that.
That's it.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Wyatt, do you have anything else to add? That was a pretty lengthy explanation.
I have a lot to add.
Okay.
But I like, I won't try to. So the primary thing that I want to uh say, I mean, there's a lot of things on here when we look at how we measure. But what I, what I really wanted to uh uh compliment the council and the staff, we have a strategic plan. It's not a document that we w- wrote and set away to revisit in five years to do a new one. Uh, we said we would attempt to use it to help us manage the city. Um, and with that in mind, we target, you know, we put objectives and projects under those objectives and metrics under those. And uh, so this is the first time for maybe ever, likely ever, but where we've now said, these are our, these are our objectives, our projects to help achieve them and how we're gonna measure whether we're we're doing what we said we were going to do. And we're making them public so we can get lots of feedback. Now, I would generally expect uh that we will have lots and lots of opinions as to whether we put the right projects and the right goals and whether we're measuring them correctly. Which is incredibly valuable information uh as we start to look at, you know, uh ourselves as a city. But by by establishing them and and making them public and discussing uh them, we will start to hold the dialogues about, you know, that. Um, and I I um, I think that we will run a better city, make better decisions as a city, you know, as a, as a city staff and a council because of that. But I'm really hopeful that the public pays attention to the goals and the metrics and tells us what they think about the various goals and metrics and whether there's a better way to measure it or whether they, you know, um, so forth. And gives us, I mean, the more feedback, I guess, I I would say the better. But I'm very excited to get it out there so we can start to get that feedback to it. And uh, I don't wanna go through each of the ones because I have lots and lots of detailed comments that I can work through with the city manager and staff in terms of what I think I would change. But thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, Mayor Pro Tem Wyatt, uh, could you come back to goal number one? We were just discussing it a little bit. And I mean, this is, this is interesting. However, I, you know, as a, as a primary goal, I don't know if it's the right place for that. I I expressed my concerns a little bit earlier. It's something that the the, this is I'm not sure how long this could take us and if we could even afford to hire the panel that Laguna Beach has hired or if we need something like that. However, um, so I've got a little bit of a concern about this being a primary goal. If we're trying to get some metrics done and 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 start uh measuring things, I think it's good that we do this at some point, but this may be a little bit premature. I think if you go to to goal number five, and we start talking about the uh economic analysis of the city, this is something I think that we we ought to be taking a look at right now. We need to increase our economic development. This is gonna offset some of the costs of our 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 visitor serving, our our visitor serving costs. And this, this goes back to something I was also talking about in in our uh budget priorities and workshop number and the budget process update. This is something I think we should ought to be taking a look at. The city has talked about doing this for years and years. This is a place I think we need to start talking about the post office and creating a priority to go after that, creating that P3 project to try to increase the revenues and and the community serving use of that prop- that property. It's gonna be incredibly important for us. Um, and so I think that actually may be a better priority in the in the short term cuz it's something I think we can handle within the next year or two. I think this other uh analysis, especially when you start taking on and and talking about our largest source of revenue and our TOT and and talking a little bit more to our hoteliers and our b- and our business community about the sensitivity of that type of a discussion that we're that we're having. Now, you know, I don't know where the where the numbers came from in terms of visitor nights and visitor and days and and things like that and what the plan is for our DMO, uh, and what they're gonna do about trying to increase that. We definitely have to take it into consideration if we increase the number of visitors we have, that our costs are going to increase, hopefully. I don't know, I doubt they're exponentially. I don't know if they're linear or or how that's going to work. But I do know one thing, if we're going to increase it, we're absolutely gonna have to increase our revenue somehow to to cover it. So uh, I think we should take a look at putting the post office in there, seeing if that's something that we, that is doable. Start those discussions again and and make that a a much larger priority. Uh, could you go back to goal four? The storm drain cleaning. I don't know if anybody watched the news today and saw what happened at Seal Beach after these storms and what that beach looks like. When we're talking about these policies i- in storm drain cleaning, we have to remember that we have San Juan Creek and we get a lot of trash coming down that creek in these big storms. And part of that discussion should be, how are we gonna partner with the upstream cities and to try to eliminate that from happening? Our beaches are are are, even though we don't operate them, they're one of our biggest selling points. And and so we need to make sure we're protecting our our water quality levels, our beach cleanliness. Uh, we pass a smoking ban to try to get cigarette butts off the beach. So that is a priority for this community. So I think we need to take a look at that. I don't know if this is the place to start having those discussions, but but I think if nothing else, we should talk about the post office and see if that's something this council wants to take a run at this year. Uh, I've been on it for five years. This council is my fifth year now and we have talked about it every year and we never seem to move forward with it. But I think with that, with the P3 going on in the harbor, it's a perfect time uh to start looking for a partner for the city to 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 increase our revenues. And so I guess my question is, does this council have have the appetite for doing something like that?
If I may, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Um, I I have a bit of experience with operational and strategic planning. And uh, in my experience, we probably don't wanna, we don't need to talk about that stuff now and we don't even need to get that on here. I think it's very easy to make the argument that the post office falls under some of these objectives already. It doesn't need to be listed um for it to make sense to be on there. Uh, I I do know that that uh cuz I've had the conversations with uh Mr. Denny that we have a plan to readdress this this strategic plan down the road after this budget. Take a look at um how we, there are a lot more things we can, a lot more objectives we can put on here like partnering with other cities on on uh storm water and and water quality. Uh, mere laundry lists and and uh, and I have a pretty good list of them here in my notes that I'll I'll bring up then. Uh, I would move that we direct staff to start uh conversations and move towards trying to to s- set the conditions for a P3 for uh uh how we might partner with someone to uh redevelop the post office.
All right, thank you for that.
Nice.
Okay, so I still think we need the council to make that direction. I don't think we can do it individually, so.
No, no, I, I.
So, I, I'm great.
I'll move to do it if you wanna have a second.
Okay, go ahead. You'll move it. I'll second it.
I I move to direct the city staff to uh take the appropriate action and start looking at other options for the post office.
All right, I'll second it. Ms. Lewis?
Yeah, I'd say if we also, I mean, the post office is something that's been talked about for, like you said, years and years and years that not that we should give up on it, but we have a commercial center right now, which is completely underutilized. And if we were to put our collective effort into Doheny Village and, you know, coming up with a plan to light it, to landscape it, to get public safety, um, like Miss, I think Mr. Wyatt was saying, a mobile unit there so that people feel safe there. We could attract business and revenue source to what's already a commercial site. I mean, it's already the right site and a revenue generator. We're just underutilizing it. So I'd like to see a lot of our time and energies put to seeing how do we maximize um the revenue at Doheny Village and get people, I mean, right now, people in Capo Beach, they don't go there. They they shop in uh San Clemente. There's not a grocery store there. They, how do we get that area uh fitted for people in Dana Point who can go to uh an underutilized revenue source? So I I would like to see us put a lot of our energy into that. So I don't know if we're directing staff to do things. I I mean, I just think these are things we should be talking about.
So I I don't disagree with you. That that's a discussion that I've been having for years and that's why we're going through the rezoning plan down there. Uh, we've been trying over and over. However, uh, and you may be right, that may have been the place the city should have started. However, they didn't. Okay, we had a council startup here in the town center. It's something that's going through revitalization. It's something that we can actually work on today. There's a piece of property that we could go after uh to try to help that area. And as we're going through our zoning uh rezoning pu- plan, we are incentivizing people down there to reinvest in their in their properties. Um, and and you're seeing that a lot of them realize the value in it. And we're doing everything we can for that area with the, cuz we just don't have the money that we have for town center. All right, I mean, we just don't to to do that. And our our previous uh public works director, and I don't know if Mr. Sinekory has looked at this or not, has actually said that project may cost three times as much as the town center did. So I don't disagree with you. We absolutely need to be looking at that, but we can do that in parallel. We don't have to say it's one or the other. And we are, we are doing it in parallel and I think we should continue down that path and do what we can to help incentivize development down there. But I I I'm not seeing anything other than, we we already created a a an account with 760,000 dollars in it to do beautification and do things like that.
Mr. Mayor, can can I just remind the council that the staff is exerting can uh significant effort in the Doheny Village?
Absolutely.
From the Doheny Village Plan Process on the zoning side to the public improvements that have been already directed by this council uh that we're going to work in consultation with the the Doheny Village Plan uh participants from the Merchants Association and local residents. And so um, I staff at all levels of the city are very focused and working very hard already. So um, you can reaffirm your support for that activity, um, but you've already given the direction.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, excuse me, uh, while I did make the motion, I don't believe I made any comments uh or discussion about it. I have a conflict of interest with the post office because I have an office within 500 feet of it. So if we continue anything with uh the post office, thank you, Mr. City Attorney. I need to recuse myself.
And to the degree that that the council feels like they want a motion on that item, I would suggest that we have a new motion and we consider.
I'd be happy to withdraw that motion.
Well, I will make the motion. So. You know, uh, you just can't participate if you're recusing, which sounds like you are. So I'm gonna make the motion to to direct staff to start taking a look at how do we start working with the post office to try to develop a P3 plan and and utilize that space more effectively for our community.
I also have a conflict there, of course, so uh I uh would not be able to comment or vote on that. Um, but I do have other comments, feedback on that thing when it's my turn.
There's a motion.
Because we've got this kind of odd situation where we're talking about lots of topics and there's a conflict on this one. And to the degree that you feel there's a need for a motion, my suggestion is that you kind of clean up that item and then we move on to the next.
That's what I'm saying. I wanna, there's a motion on the table and if there's not a second, it'll die. If there's a second, then we can vote. Should we direct staff to do that or not?
Second the motion.
Okay, and if you wanna continue to discuss it, we can. If you wanna vote on it, we can.
If we're gonna have a lot more discussion on it, I would suggest that uh the the two council members with conflict step aside. If it's gonna be, if it's gonna be quick, then, you know, it's kind of a judgment call there. You guess, you know, if you get into a long discussion, you need to step down from the dais.
One member knows, right?
Go ahead.
I do have a comment, though. Okay, so my question is, when you say start looking at this P3, what are, what's involved? What kind of staff time and what kind of costs? Because that's something I think we should be talking about in the CIP. This is really a a a capital improvement. Do we want to do this? So I think this is something we should be discussing with staff in the CIP subcommittee. We can kind of hash out that and then bring it back to council.
So I understand where you're coming from. However, you and I are on the CIP subcommittee. And we only have one other member here. And it's something that we're gonna have to direct staff to do down there anyway to start bringing some costs around it. So why don't we just go ahead and direct them, start, cuz that's what we're gonna have to find out anyway. When we start in this process, we have to find out if the post office is even interested in us doing this, what we can and can't do. And once we figure that out, then we can start determining what are the costs around it to the city, what's the benefit to the city? And that's when we can have the discussion, should we pursue it further. But I just want direction for him to start the process.
Okay, so. If I may, um, you've already identified the postal service site um in the previous item. And that will come back to your committee.
Okay.
Um, a P3 is a different approach to it.
Yeah.
Um, and it is potentially one that does not involve um capital intensive costs to the city. And so that is something that frankly could be explored by your your subcommittee. And you can come back with a recommendation to full council about whether or not you wanna pursue the postal service site as a capital project of the city or if you wanna pursue it more in in um a P3 type of manner.
Yeah, so I mean, my preference would be for us to first discuss it and discuss these details because I really don't know to to really be able to vote on this now. So if you ask me to vote on this now, I'm gonna vote no because I want more information. So I'd rather we just put this off. It's already on our list. Sit down and talk with staff and see what's involved.
However, uh, making a vote on it right now does nothing more than what we would be doing anyway. You and I can pri- prioritize it when we bring it back, but it sends them down the path. You and I can prioritize it when we bring it back, but it sends them down the path. That's all I'm asking them to do is go down the path tonight. It's something that's been talked about for years and years. And I understand you want to see more on it. We're going to get a lot more on it. And, but instead of putting it off for another month or month and a half and then having it die because we get directed up in another direction, I just want to start it now to get something moving on it. I would like to take the vote tonight, I understand that. And all it is, is a direction to, to investigate both avenues. If we want to purchase it, we could, is this under a CIP? A P3, does it make sense for us to even attempt it? But more importantly, it allows us to start the discussion with the post office because it may be as simple as, we're not interested in selling the property. And if that's the case, we're done. And so, and if they are interested, what are they, what are they willing, are there going to be any restrictions? There's a lot of conversation that needs to go on around this. And I think if we're going to truly investigate it, we need to send staff down that path now. And then once it comes back, we can have those discussions. Is it a one, two, or three priority? Or is it not a priority? Oh, is it just far too expensive, we don't even want to discuss it any longer? That's all this discussion is. It'll come back to CIP anyway. And at that point, we can make the recommendation up to council, should we pursue it or not? So with that, I'll call a vote. Oh, you have to vote abstain. Did you abstain on the vote?
I can't. I don't have anything in front of me to do that.
Touch your screen.
So what, what the screen doesn't show there is.
So typically, it's actually not an abstention, it's a recusal. And we don't offer that. And so I think you need to remove them from the vote.
Right.
So, I mean, they can't abstain on something that they can't participate in.
I think we should do a voice.
Okay, we'll do a voice vote.
Okay. So.
You want to do a roll call vote?
I am.
Okay.
Councilmember Lewis? Councilmember Federico?
No.
I'm recusing myself and am not voting.
Correct.
I'm not abstaining, I am not voting.
Correct. Okay. Councilmember Big Sword?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Wyatt?
I am recusing myself and I'm recusing myself and not voting.
Mayor Mueller?
Aye. So the item carries to one with Councilmember Lewis in dissent. Thank you. Okay. That brings us back to the agenda item. And I think Mayor Pro Tim Wyatt had another comment.
So, so this is a strategic plan with, with goals and metrics that we put in place. It's a living strategic plan, meaning that with time, we will want to update it, not, hopefully not radically different on the objectives, but on terms of, of projects as we achieve them and priorities we understand. Some of the things that we're bringing up are, and, and the, and the five goals on a marked priority sequence, there are five simultaneously areas of emphasis that we want. So five, when it talks about the general plan, isn't the priority, fifth priority, it has the same priority as, as goal one when we talk about gathering data. Again, the reason that is in there is the goal, understanding the economics of the things that we're targeting to do. As the hotel rooms come online and we, and we promote the city and try to bring in more visitors and conferences, I don't disagree with those and I'm not, I am certainly not in conflict with our resorts. Alls I'm trying to do is make sure that we are prepared to provide them the services that we, that they will need to have when they come. And that means that we need to understand and allocate the costs for having those available as they're needed. The same, actually, when you get to the general plan, the reason for that is the same. Every time we allocate land use, all of the infrastructure and services that need to, if that, if we build it out to that land use, there's a cost of the infrastructure in place. So if you make it residential, the infrastructure needs are different than if you make it commercial and so forth. So every one of those decisions in the general plan have a cost to, if they were built out, they would have a cost to operate. And so we need to make sure that as we review the general plan and build it out, that we understand that the revenues necessary to operate the plan, if we could implement it, are coming in. So they all sort of fit together in terms of being, looking out ahead of where we are, which is why they're in the strategy.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So this is a receive and update and I think, I think that's going to be, I think we're done with that. So that'll bring us up to, oh my God, what I did to my script. There it is. Thank you for everybody for your input on this. This has been an interesting discussion. That takes us to staff reports. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do want to say a thanks to the department heads and to Rachel Johnson in particular for their assistance in pulling together the strategic plan metrics as they will continue to report those in throughout the year. And so just want to recognize them for their great work and, and we'll see you on the 19th. Thank you.
And the graphical work that somebody put in, so thank you.
Mr. City Attorney?
I don't have anything this evening.
Okay. So that takes us to adjournment. The next regular meeting of the city council will be February 19th, 2019 at 5:00 PM in the city council chamber located at 33282 Golden Lantern Suite 210, Dana Point, California. We're adjourned.